Um, so this is going to be the, uh, we're gonna open the Zoom meeting. It's, uh, July eleventh, twenty twenty-three, seven o'clock, seven oh one. Uh, meeting of the zoning board of, uh, appeals, the town of Cohasset. So, sitting as the board are myself, Woody Chitik as chair, Dave McMorris as vice chair, whoops, let me get my video. Okay, um, Mike Dickey, Lee Darst, and Matt Watkins. Do we have Charlie Higginson or no? He's not waiting in the wings?
Unless he's home, which I've tried to promote. Okay.
Oh, well, um, he'll join us, I'm sure, but, uh, we may have to give a... Did he pick us packet up?
Yes, everyone picked their packets up.
Okay, well, it's seven o'clock, so let's begin. We have, um, actually, not one, not two, but three withdrawals. So, the regular business of the board, first of all, uh, would be, uh, special permit request filed by Adele and William Morris for a dock at one eighty-five Jerusalem Road. Uh, they have requested that we withdraw, we allow their withdrawal, uh, which is a, a letter submitted. Uh, any discussion on the part of the board?
It's without prejudice, correct?
Without prejudice, yeah. So, I'd make a motion to, um, accept the, uh, with doc withdrawal request on, uh, for the special permit. Move and seconded, Woody Chitik, I? Uh, somebody else?
Uh, Michael Dickey, I.
Good, good.
I'm gonna just try my other computer. For some reason, I'm not hearing the audio. I don't know if you guys can hear me.
I can hear you.
Yeah, we can, we can hear Matt. This is very odd.
And Dave, have you voted? Whoops. Is Dave fro- Dave looks frozen? Well. We have our, we have our three votes.
Yeah, Dave hasn't blinked in a while.
Yeah. There he is. Look, Dave, have you voted yet on this withdrawal request, special permit? Uh, you're muted, so it's a little hard to tell what you're saying. Dave, you're muted.
Hey, McMorris, hi.
Okay, so, uh, we had the, uh, four, five votes there, actually. Matt also voted. So, this, the second order of business is a variance request filed by the same Adele and William Morris for a dock at one eighty-five Jerusalem Road. And, um, there was also a request for withdrawal submitted by their lawyer, Adam Brodsky. So, uh, discussion about the withdrawal request, or should we move to action?
Again, this is without prejudice?
Without prejudice, sorry. Withdraw without prejudice. So, I'd make a motion to, um, uh, allow the applicants, uh, the Morises to withdraw, uh, their variance request without prejudice.
I'll second that.
Okay, got a second? Okay, all in favor, Woody Chitik, I?
Hey, McMorris, uh.
Lee Darst, I.
Uh, Michael Dickey, I.
And what about Matt? Is Matt listed as home? Is that what he is?
He's showing his muted.
Yeah.
Matt is not an attendees. He hasn't popped back in yet. I think he's still trying to set up his laptop.
Okay, well, I mean, it's, it's, we, we, we have four votes and that's one more than the three we need. Uh, the third, uh, again, uh, really, um, housekeeping at this point is a special permit, uh, request filed by Jason and Lisa Zatz Mary to, um, raise a dwelling, uh, in the floodplain at thirty-one Elm Street and reconstruct it. Um, just before, I mean, this afternoon, rather late, Montana, right around four o'clock or some, something thereabouts.
Yeah, they submitted it at one o'clock. I was waiting for an official letter. They just sent an email and Cassandra told me to hold off until I had the letter, if it was like the right time, so.
Good, good work. Um, that's the right thing to do. Anyway, uh, a letter has been received. Uh, it was emailed to all of us, uh, requesting again withdrawal without prejudice. And, um, I would, uh, ask if there's any discussion, otherwise we can move to a vote to uh, approve the applicant's request. So, Dave, you, are you?
No, I'm seconding.
Okay, so it's, uh, moved and seconded to, uh, uh, withdraw without prejudice, the, uh, special permit request by the Zat Mary family. Uh, Woody Chitik, I?
Hey, McMorris, hi.
Lee Darst, I.
Uh, Michael Dickey, I.
Matt Watkins, I.
Yay.
All right, and we have one more hearing, and this is a hearing where there are, uh, let's see, what is it? It's, um, to build a porch, uh, deck addition, and in addition to the home, uh, there are a few um, improvements and setbacks and a few, uh, further encroachments and setbacks, and I'm gonna have to recuse myself. And Dave, would you mind taking over? It turns out that the back corner of my lot um, way, way, weighed, uh, a field, um, touches the back corner of their lot. And so I am, uh, somewhat conflicted, I suppose. I can't even see their house, but it doesn't matter. Um, so I'm going to recuse myself on, on, um, fifty-three Elm Street, uh, special permit filed by, uh, Joseph Durkin and Emily Cotter. So, Matt, would you take over, and I will mute myself and, um, stop my video, okay?
You mean Dave?
David, right?
Okay, uh, who's here to speak on behalf of the applicants?
I'm admitting them right now. Someone? Thank you, Alyssa. Just give it one second. Okay, here we go.
All right, let's open this hearing on fifty-three Elm Street. And for the applicants, we have Alyssa Jones, correct?
Um, hi, Alyssa Jones. I'm the, um, architectural designer on the project and, um, um, I, I believe, um, Paul Marabito was trying to call in, um, he's the, the, um, engineer with, um, Ross Engineering, Grady Engineering, and I don't know if you see him on the...
I only have a Dave Lehigh and a David, and then I have Home, who has not identified themselves.
Okay, maybe that could be Paul, um, um, I wonder.
Paul is admitted right now as a panelist, so Paul, if you are home, will you unmute yourself, please?
Oh, it's, um, Paul, if you're there, it's in the, the bottom.
Someone else is calling, you know.
Okay. I'm happy to speak. I just wanted to give him a chance.
Okay.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, um. This is Paul Marabito from Alyssa Jones Hearing Company. We, um, are representing the applicant, uh, Joseph and Emily Cotter. And now the meeting with me is Alyssa Jones of Project Architect. Um, the, the home that's the subject of the application was built, you know, a- around sixteen seventy. They're proposing to add in addition to the back of the house. Here, on my site plan, Montana, can you share that plan? The one I submitted, does EBA plot plan?
Um, unfortunately, that's not my job. You have to do that. I'm sorry.
Okay. On the plan that you have, the, the area in red, um, the, uh, rear portion of the existing house was left open when they built it. The plan is to fill that in. And, um, let me turn this down here. Yeah, the plan is to fill the house in. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
The plan is to fill the rear portion of the house in, and also e- extended another five feet out toward the rear of the house. They're also proposing to, um, uh, construct a, a new deck that's seventeen and a half feet out from the back of the house and approximately forty feet wide. The, um, set, the side yard setbacks of the existing house are all non-conforming. On the left side, as you look at it from the street, the right, the left front corner is thirteen point eight feet from the side property line. And the rear corner is fifteen point one feet, which, which we're gonna hold. The side yard setback is fifteen feet. The, um, end of the proposed deck would be fifteen point six feet on the left side of the house, so the the left side of the house, all, uh, all of the side yard setbacks, um, conform. As a way of information, back in nineteen eighty, back in nineteen eighty-six, there was an application submitted to the zoning board, which was approved, uh, unanimously to allow the construction of the, uh, existing deck that's on the house now. On, on, on the right side of the house, the, um, setback at the right rear corner is eight point three feet to the, uh, stairs. The house is nine point nine feet, uh, which is less than fifteen feet. The, um, uh, the proposed house will be set at nine point nine feet, which is about one point three feet further in from the existing stairs. The, um, right rear corner of the deck will be nine point six feet, as we show on the plan. That's proposed. That's just under fifteen feet. We're, we're, we filed the plan for, uh, finding a special permit to allow the construction of the, um, uh, uh, dwelling and the deck to go forth with a special permit. Uh, we feel that the, um, the setbacks on the right side, which are non-conforming, will not be, uh, any more detrimental to the neighborhood. Um, the, the existing house right now is, is anywhere from on the right side is only, um, eight point three feet off the side yard. And the deck will be set in further from that. The rear of it would be nine point six feet, and the front portion of the house would be nine point nine feet. Um, this plan has been approved by the Conservation Commission, where some of the work was done, is being proposed within a hundred feet of the, uh, wetland. Uh, we, we did receive approval from them, and the appeal period is, is, has expired. There's been no appeals. Um, I think with that, I'll end and answer any questions you may have. If there's any questions about the architecture, I, I, I would, uh, defer to, um, Alyssa.
All right. Um, any of the board members have any questions?
Uh, ju- just a quick one. Uh, Mike Dickey here. Um, on, on the plot plan, there's red and there's yellow. I take it the red marks new house and the, and the yellow marks new deck?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And what's the height of the new house within the red area on that side setback, where, whereabouts the steps are?
Um, both side of the house? Um.
Cause I know.
The proposal, the proposed height would be twenty-five point three feet.
Would it be that at the nine point nine setback portion, or is it notched?
Yes.
It would be?
At, at twenty-five point three is well below the thirty-five foot limit.
But the existing house?
The, um, existing house was shown as twenty-five point three as well. That's, that's the highest point of the roof on, on the existing house.
Okay, and is the existing? I see the stairs side setback is, you know, eight point three, but the existing dwelling
That's.
Setback, is that, is that further than fifteen feet from the sideline?
No, it's, it's, uh, it'll be nine point nine feet.
But existing currently?
Um, that, that eight point three is to the steps. And the treads are about ten inches, twenty inches. Uh, the, the, the existing would be approximately, um, probably nine point eight.
Nine point eight, you said?
Yes.
Sorry, is, is your question the?
I'm just concerned, I'm just trying to figure out the project, you know, like the stairs are an allowable projection at that height on the sideline. I didn't, I, I was having a hard time seeing if the existing house itself is within nine point nine feet of that side setback, is that correct?
Yeah, the, the, the closest corner of the, um, the back of the house is at eight point three from the, um, from the property line there. That's, that's the, the tightest spot, um, so.
Existing, you mean?
That's the stairs though, right?
Um, well, that's, it's, that's right where the, um, like, that's right where the stairs and the, the corner of the house is, right at, um. Oh, why don't I share my screen? If that's okay, Paul, I'll, I'll pull up the
Yeah, the, uh.
Plan for you, if you want.
The proposed addition would be in another one point six feet.
Mm-hmm.
That's the nine point nine, so that existing nonconformity would be reduced by one point six feet.
Would, would that be helpful if I, um?
I think it would be.
Pull up this week's plan? Okay. Okay, um, just zoom over here. Um, I know it's a, a little hard to see, but you know, this is the outline of the existing dwelling. Um, the corner of the house comes all the way to, um, where the edge of the back stairs start. Um, so, you know, it's the, the arrow, the dimension is showing eight, eight foot three, um. So it's either, you know, eight foot three or eight foot five right to the corner of the existing house, and that's that's the, the tightest, um, setback on that existing side. And then we've jogged the addition, we've brought it over, um, you know, another foot and a half. So that we're not, you know, the, um, the structure is not getting, you know, any more nonconforming on that, um, on that side.
Actually, I have a question on that.
Yeah.
Where the eight point three is?
Yeah.
That's to the steps. And can you tell me what the distance there is from the property line to the existing building?
To the building, and I'm kind of, I'm zooming in right here. I think the, the steps look like it's just a few inches past, um, you know, I, I, I really think the, the dimension here is the eight foot three is from the property line to the corner of the house. It's kind of, it's um, I think that's what they were.
That's, that's correct. Um, right above the arrow at the end of the eight point three, you can see a, a small, um, line going up, just a, a tick mark down, down by the eight point three, uh, dimension. That, that, that's the corner of the house. At that eight point three went to the corner of the step from, from, from the step to the corner of the house, which we show with a small tick mark at the end of the eight point three, right there.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah, it's, it's probably one, one or two inches more.
Okay, good.
So what you did was to, um, the proposed stairs coming off the red area are gonna be, uh, recessed back in in, into the home. And that, that allowed us to uh, place the corner of the house and the stairs at nine point nine feet, as opposed to eight point three.
Okay.
It's shown, it's shown on the drawing to the right of the one you have on the.
Oops, sorry.
Okay, I guess I have a question that doesn't really matter for this hearing. But I guess it's for John Howland. That the permitted, um, protuberances or whatever, steps, chimneys, that kind of thing, is a fairly recent change to the zoning bylaw. And it used to be, you know, you measured to anything, um, to figure the setback. So, in a case like this, where you have an existing setback to, say, eight point three to the steps, um, it would measure.
It, it, it really is eight point three to the, to the corner of the house.
See, it is to the corner of the house, which makes this easy. Like, like I said, this question doesn't really have to do with this application. But, you know, norm, now we would measure from that property line to the side of the building and count the steps, not count the steps as, you know, part of the encroachment. Um, but we used to. So, when we consider something like this with a, with an existing nonconformity, do we count the steps or not, if the steps were put in there before the change to the zoning bylaw came? Do you understand what I'm asking?
Yes, yeah, it's to, to me or to John?
To John, I think.
Oh, okay.
Well, I, I think the steps, it, it kind of depends. Sometimes the first step might be granite, and that's almost landscaping, so that we might not need to count it, uh, whereas a structural step there, so I, I would say, uh, again, the, the, the couple inches, I don't think we'd count the steps, uh, at that point, really. Uh, uh, steps, it's usually three or more steps is where we start to count them, uh, there. If it was, you know, the low level here, uh, as I say, about two inches in further, uh, than what you have, uh, because there's eighteen inches to the new addition. Steps are usually ten to eleven inches each, so we're, we're talking three to four inches beyond, beyond that for the first step, and I, you know, a- again, I think for the one step, it, it wouldn't be de minimis to, to, to count that.
Oh, yeah, no, I know a question about that. I'm.
Yep.
All right, that's just for another.
But I do, I do know what you mean.
Cause I wondered too, like, that, that dashed line that's to the right of you know, you've got the eight point three, and then you see that dashed line that's there. I, maybe that threw me off. I was, I was kind of looking at that dashed line as well as did the back of the house. That dashed line looks to be around fifteen feet, and I wondered if that back of the house bumped in fifteen feet. And that just the stairs that were the projection, but I think your explanation's helpful, but what, what is, I just, just for my knowledge, what is that dashed line along the left-hand side?
Um, the, uh, short dashed line is an elevation contour. And the longer dashed line with, with just a dot, that's a hundred-foot buffer zone that the Conservation Commission.
Matt, I think the, I think the one that you're asking about is the setback, delineates the setbacks.
Although the setback line, you know, we, we show the, um.
That's a fifteen-foot line.
That's a fifteen-foot setback.
Okay.
It's going up and down vertically on the plan.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions?
I have one question too. I think when I looked at the architectural plans, um, on A two dash two, when we calculate the increase within the setback, uh, A two dash one?
Uh, excuse me, could I just interrupt for a second? Charlie Higgins called me. He can't, he isn't being allowed to enter the, uh, Zoom call. And.
Do you, one second.
The computer won't let him in, so I'm gonna log out again. I'm just passing that message along.
Um, I, I don't see him as an attendee. I just have a David and a Dave.
Yeah, I don't see him there either.
I can resend him the Zoom link, um, via email very fast to see if that, if it will help him.
Okay, I think that's a good idea, Montana.
And I guess the question I had, are you able to pull up A two dash one?
Sure, okay, so it's, um, in, uh, uh, elevation? Um.
Yeah, proposed rear elevation, existing rear elevation.
Yeah. Yeah, so the existing is on the top, the proposed is on, on the bottom, below.
So I just wonder, when we're looking at the rear elevations of the top left and the bottom left?
Yes.
And we show an increase of zero percent. Obviously, it's going up quite a bit in height, but
Right.
We don't, are we not counting the portion on the top, like, what would be, I guess, the top left there in our percentage?
Well, so, um, I, I know when I was so I, I know, you know, the, the, um, the face of the house, you know, that, the, the vertical facade that you'd see would be increasing from single story to second story, but, um, but there, you know, the there is still, um, a portion of the house and the roof, um, beyond that, so you know, I, um, so that's how I calculated it, was because, you know, we're, you know, the, um, that portion that, you know, what we see is still, um, you know, the existing is, um, in, in the setback and and, um, we're, you know, maintaining the same height. We're just, you know, kind of re- extending the vertical, but.
Yeah, but that's not that gray portion that you have and is not existing.
Oh, sorry, we're, the, we're pointing towards up, up here. This is existing. Yeah, this is, um, this is the, um, kind of the, the cape roof line of the, that you'd see you know, on the, the front portion of the house. This is, this is, um, this roof coming down here. Um.
Yep. See where you're pointing.
But if you look at like your cover page, right, which is just a picture of the back of the house, you, you know, your, your left side currently is lower than your right side, if you will, um, of, of the house, right? And you're, so you're adding height to the left-hand side, but we're not counting that in the percentages, I guess, is my point.
Right, so I'm, um, like, when, when you look at the side elevation on the right here, um, you know, this view has, you know, we're, we're increasing the height along the back portion here, um, and increasing, you know, the size of the deck. Um, so I calculated, you know, the kind of existing nonconforming that's within the side setback, and then the proposed nonconforming within the side setback, and And so it went went um, you know, increased from eight hundred and forty square feet to one thousand one hundred and forty six square feet. Um, but over uh when you're looking at the rear, you know, this portion of the house is the nonconforming in the side setback.
Yeah. I don't know if it's me or if I'm it could be me, but
Not.
I think I think maybe I don't know. I guess somebody correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that we should probably be counting the upper left hand portion in the percentages of um increase within the setback. Does that would that make sense?
Like
Because we're adding because because that top part that you're pointing to right there, that that's not like on the top. That's not existing currently. Because when you look at them below, you know, you're adding what is it? However, many feet there, right?
Right, yes.
Within within that.
Right, yeah, I guess it um, you know, I did I did try to ask exactly how to calculate the facade, you know, if you just are including the the vertical face that you're looking at, or if you're including, you know, anything beyond the vertical as well, because this this um you know, this roof line beyond is is there. Um, but if you, you know, if you just wanted me to calculate the this outline, you know, kind of right here compared to
That's the facade.
Yes, it's just the
The actual
The same thing that you did for the proposed side elevation, you would do for the proposed rear elevation. You do the exact same thing. You would just add that you would put in the um the proposed conforming facade area, you would add the whole total.
Right, but when you're looking at the side here, you know, do you?
You the side, right, it's the rear that is missing.
The the roof line where, you know, am I just doing the vertical wall? And what about this roof up here?
Whatever's in the setback, you count.
Whatever's in, yeah.
Right.
Which, you know, half the roof is sixteen feet away, you don't count it.
But this roof is in the setback.
Yeah, so you count it as either existing or new.
Yeah, yeah. So so that's what I did.
Now, I know, but look at I can see what you did on the side. And that makes sense to me on the proposed side elevations and the existing side elevations.
Yeah.
But if you look at the proposed and existing rear rear elevations.
Yeah.
Part of that facade that you have in red is in the setback. Okay, on the existing rear elevation, it's the part that should be in red is the kind of crosshatched part you have. The thing at the top doesn't, it's not in in the setback at that space. But on the bottom one, it is. So you have to calculate the difference in actual facade that's in the setback there. Okay.
So you're saying that you think this roof is not within the setback?
You've already counted it on the side. Right? All the roof that's in the setback along that side, you've already counted in the side elevation. In the rear, all you need to do is calculate the facade part, not the roof. Because you've already counted it.
It looks to me like on your bottom there, where you have that where you have that solid red line at a diagonal. You'd you'd almost count from that solid red line to the top of the roof as a as a portion that does that sound right, you David? I don't know if you can see that solid red line.
Sure, um.
Because that's the portion that you're adding, you know, it looks like roughly like the top part exists. But you're adding, you know, that portion to it.
Right, right. Yeah, um, well.
Matt, Dave, just one quick question. I think I I think um there's a difference between the mass and then the square footage. I think the square footage is accounted for on the side elevations. But the mass, although there's square footage added, it's the same mass looking at both the existing elevation and the proposed rear elevation from the side. Because it's kind of three D, but your mass is really only going to be in you know, two dimensional uh and it's picked up in in there. So the the math is probably right. But I I know where you're getting confused with the square footage that's being added there, but it's already accounted for in in the mass between the up up and the up of the right. So the mass hasn't increased on the rear, but the square footage has.
And that's what we need to know is the square footage.
Sure.
We don't really, so we're less concerned about the mass because that's not the visible part in the setback. The facade is what we're concerned about.
Okay, can I just ask a question? So I'm looking at the pictures here, the actual pictures of the back of the house. And on that, if we look at the rear of the house, that is a one story, a one story. And it's going to be two stories.
Yes.
That so that it that this that is going to be increased and in the setback because you're adding a second story. And it's not like the picture in the drawing. The drawing shows the roof going all the way up, but that's not what it looks like from the actual physical picture. Which I think is confusing me because the picture shows a one story and then this drawing um on the left hand corner shows a two story and there's no accounting for that second story in the um increase.
Sure. So um let me flip to the picture. Um so it's um I know it's it's very hard to see, but there is the roof line of the Cape is, you know, back back here, which you can't see from this view, but when you look at it straight on, you'd be able to see the the roof line.
So there's a second story. There's a second story on top of this?
No, no, sorry, it's it's um.
I think what you've done on the side elevations is correct. What you've done on the rear elevation is not. What you need to do on the rear elevation is calculate what you have there in red, but not what you have in the solid blue color. And on the bottom one, do the same thing. Calculate what you have in the in the pink.
Sure.
That little square in the moon.
Do you agree with that? Because I think that people are confusing volume and facade, and I'm happy to, you know, walk you through the volume calculations of the square footage. But when we're talking about the facades, we're strictly talking about, you know, what you see when you look at the rear elevation, what you see when you look at the the side elevation. So, you know, if I wasn't supposed to if if I'm just supposed to calculate the vertical and not the roof beyond, that's that's fine. But you can't pick, you know, I can't you can't decide to calculate the roof on the side elevation and not on the rear elevation.
You you've already counted it on the same roof that you're looking at from the rear, you've already calculated on the side. You don't have to count it twice.
I I think it would be helpful, uh, Alyssa, if the if you could calculate the, oh, I want to say the uh kind of rectangle area there that's the mass in there so that they it I think it helps to give them a better visual idea of what they're talking about. Uh, so that that um I want to say the four sided area on the um proposed rear elevation. So at least there's a number on that so they could calculate it even though it's in on two dimensional, it's in three dimensional, but that way they they can get a square footage of what that that mass is.
Sure, yeah, yeah, I I um.
Yeah, right, right there. I think that that would be helpful.
Right, yeah.
So they understood.
Yeah, yeah, um. Yeah, I can I can pull that up for you and um you know, I think you know, where we're gaining a lot of space up on the second floor um you know, we're we are increasing the um the square footage up on the second floor quite a bit because of um, you know, the the original structure is a one story in this um on the the spec portion of the house. And then um the, you know, the had the house that currently has like two wings off the back. So our goal is to like kind of infill in the middle and then be able to build a second story up above to get one more bedroom for the family.
And everything that you're doing in the middle is, you know, not even in our jurisdiction because it's all conforming. All we're concerned about is the nonconforming pieces.
Right, right, yeah. And so um so up on the second floor, you know, we we are increasing the um the nonconforming square footage from um like two hundred and twenty four square feet to three hundred and eighty three square feet. Um so I, you know, I know it's a you know, it's a it's an a narrow lot and um but, you know, we're overall the existing house is about a twenty four hundred square foot house and um with the proposed addition, we'd um bring it up to about thirty two hundred square feet. So I, you know, I can certainly you know, if I if I close out of this program, I can, you know, get get that number for you.
Okay.
Um, but I don't know.
That's all we need.
Okay.
Anybody else have questions? All right. Um, is there anyone from the audience that has a question who wishes to speak? No hands up.
No, there are no one. There's no one with their hands raised and Charles never admitted himself, so.
Okay. Does anyone else have anything to add? Okay, we're hearing nothing on move that we continue this hearing until August. What's what's our August date, Montana?
I believe it is August first.
Okay, the movie continue until August first and we'll have a draft by then.
Seconded.
Thank you.
All in favor, David Morrissey?
I'm Michael Vicki, I.
Lee Darcey.
Matt Watkins, I.
And Alyssa, just for your um edification, what we usually do here is we continue until the next meeting and at the next meeting, we'll have a draft decision that will then if there's nothing new, we will close the hearing, deliberate and have a decision.
Sure, sure. Yep, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. And
Okay, I'll jump back into the administration portion of this hearing. Um, first item, Montana, you listed as reorganization. I'm not sure I understand.
Yes, so per request of the town, um reorganization as in just voting for revoting or voting for the chair and vice chair just to make sure that everyone's happy or if someone wants to vote for themselves, they can do so now.
This is the same old song. I'll raise the issue again. I'd I'd be more than happy to consider a new chair. Not going to hurt my feelings.
Good luck with that, Woody.
Um, Mike, I know you're jumping that like a dog in a bone, but.
You guys put me on that working group for crying out loud.
I mean, I know, but.
You won't you won't miss another meeting, Mike.
No, seriously, does somebody want to be chair?
Mi- Mike, it sounds like there's a motion coming.
Well, actually, we would probably uh attempted fate enough just putting Mike on the zoning bylaw committee. I don't dare run another fast one on him. Well, is it the uh feeling of the group that we have our three voting members presently, myself, Dave McMorris and Charlie Higgins with no proposed changes? I mean, seriously, you're not going to hurt my feelings.
Yeah, that sounds good to me. I I'm in favor of that.
Happy with that as well.
Okay, well, uh, does this uh Montana require a vote of the uh board to maintain the present uh structure and membership uh roles of of the zoning board of appeals? I'd make that motion to maintain that for another year.
I'll second that.
Movement seconded, all in favor, Woody Chitikai.
Dave McMorrissey.
Lee Darcey.
I'm Michael Vicki, I.
Matt Watkins, I.
Okay, so one more year. Um approval of meeting minutes, I had a number of edits. I'd like to get your comments, but I'd also like to uh kind of take a whack at at making some of those changes offline and forwarding them to the Montana and the board um rather than try to approve it tonight.
I agree.
Can I request that when you make edits, could you make comments so I could see your changes just for moving forward? Thank you.
Well, I thought what I'd do is is maybe edit in red or something, and if it's not understood. But one of the things, the simple things that that we have processed, we've followed the procedure um is that the minutes are done in past tense. You're reporting on what happened as opposed to there is a discussion going on. I know that's what you're listening to. But by the time the minutes get written, they have to reflect what happened and our town council has been very um probably refreshing from the standpoint of less is more. And so I'll I'll edit and you can take a look at why the heck did he cut this out? But um Carolyn Murray generally says the less the better.
Well done.
Because we we may get trapped in syntax or something that we don't intend to. Um, that's all. I mean, it's a stylistic thing, but probably very good advice. So with the agreement of the board, I'd like to um take a look at the at the minutes and and maybe do do some stylistic editing uh more than content editing. Content would go go by the boards as well. Is that okay with the board?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, and our next board meeting is August first, as Dave found out a few minutes ago. Um, I don't know, Montana, do do we have appeals or applications in the wings?
There may be one application coming in. Um, Clark from planning board was asking me today, but I don't think you'll be getting on till September. And then we still have the three lots from Black Horse Lane that were going to be continued until our August, so.
John, anything that you're allowed to reveal in terms of the status there?
Uh, no, I I believe the last word we had that uh they were getting the information together to apply to the planning board. I think um the engineer or was out of town and is now back in, so I think that should be uh into the planning board within the next week or so.
And that would be a subdivision under consideration. And that would be a, a subdivision under consideration as opposed to a common driveway, et cetera?
Yes, that, that was the direction they, uh, had indicated they were going, so I think, I think that's the most appropriate way for them.
Okay. And uh, I will tell the board that I have heard from a couple of. Select people and the conservation, not the conservation, the historic society. That I believe the select board is going to propose or initiate or, or constitute a, uh. Kind of historic district feasibility. Group to take a look at expanding the very narrow. Uh, historic district this town has, which is literally the houses around the common. To encompass the village, I would hope, uh, Elm Street, I would hope many of the other streets like South Main and whatever, but. Um. No surprise, I put my hat in the ring this afternoon to be a member of that group. And I think the town is fortunate, I believe, in having the former head of the Hingham Historic District Commission who's moved here. Within the last year or two, who would know. Historic districts backwards and forwards, um, I think there are a lot of benefits, but. Many of you heard me a couple of years ago at the zoning bylaw. Uh, review, uh, make a plea for this. So, um. I'm not getting off the board, but I, I would be a participant if, if they accept me, and they may not. But, um, I think it's overdue for the town at any rate, that we. Have something very, very special going on here and, um. You know, witness the two hundred and fifty house book. So I'd like to. See us have a reasonable but uh expanded, um. Uh, historic district or districts, Hingham, I believe, has eleven districts. Rather than sweep the entire town together. You know, they, they have selected neighborhoods that have, uh, kind of spe- special historical, uh. Providence and, um. That may be the way we should go, I mean, there are sections of our town where. Houses are fifty years old, that's nice, but. You know, they shouldn't be subject to those. Conditions, so if anybody else wants to, I don't know who they're gonna put on the, on this study group. But if anybody has a passion. I encourage you to speak to Gene Dipold. Healy. Gene Healy Dipold. Um, who's, uh, known the chair of the select board, but also spearheading this effort as I understand it. So that's. Piece of news, I mean, who knows, it'll take a. Year or so, it shouldn't take three years.
Um, what do you have one other?
Yeah, David.
Um, we neglected to pre-assign fifty-three, um.
Oh.
So we do need to assign.
Would you like to do that? I, I won't recuse myself, I'll just shut up and.
I'll.
I, I'll do it.
All right. Thank you.
I love, I love things and little things in a step back, I'm fine, so. I will do that.
Yeah, I learned something, I didn't realize that my property nudged their property. I, I mean, you can't see one house from the other, but. So I've learned something about my backyard. With this application process. I don't know what good it'll do me, but that. Little bit smarter. Okay, is anything, is there anything else going on that is likely to come up before us or that we have? Let dangle, I mean, other than Black Horse Lane?
That's it on my end.
Okay.
What?
Go ahead, Dave.
They with, the other Elm Street, one, the thirty-one, thirty-five, they withdrew that?
Yeah, without prejudice.
They withdrew this afternoon.
Okay.
And I don't, uh, you know.
So that's.
I know as much as you know.
So Black Horse is really all the, the only continued thing we have going, right?
That I know of, there's, there's, uh, remains. Inactivity at the old Atlantica Lobster Pound, uh, Mill River Marine Area, will that surface? Sometime, yes, I don't know when.
Hmm.
I expect that, that'll come, some of it will come before us, parking among other things, but. It doesn't seem to be any activity, the, um, John, the, uh. Activity down across from St. Anthony's seems to be in fits and starts, the, uh, mixed use.
Yes, uh, two, one across from St. Anthony's at one forty-seven. South Main, they're seen to be waiting for some doors, uh. Rough plumbing has been done, rough sprinkler system has been installed, roof, windows. And siding are in, so they're, I think they're waiting on the doors. Uh, before they get the electrician in there to start his, his rough, so. That's where they're at, and then over the Atlantica, they're in the process of, uh. Resubmitting some plans, uh, for their permit. Um, because they're in the floodplain, they had it with the value of the building, they had to do it in phases. Uh, so they're, uh, they've gone to the. Uh, a couple of praises submitted that information, and now the architect is, is drawing the plan, so they can, they'll probably do, uh. Do it in three phases, so the back half of the building is phase one, complete that, get occupancy, and then move on to phase two. Uh, that's gonna. Uh, they're allowed to do that, that's gonna prevent them from having to raise the building.
Okay, and that would all be in conformity with our decision of months ago, right?
Yeah, the, 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 the overall project hasn't changed any, uh, just like.
Just the timing or the pieces of it.
Right, so the, the back. Uh, the back left-hand corner first, then work towards the front.
Okay.
That, that's what I'm anticipating, I think the, the architects are drawing it up now.
All right. So with that, and I see that we have, uh, Charlie Higginson, uh, who's muted but has joined us. So I guess we could consider him as a sixth member, although not of the hearing. And that's great, Charlie, welcome.
Hi, total inspiration.
It's a quick, it was a quick meeting, I mean, with one hearing. So you didn't miss a lot. And there'll be a draft next, uh, next month on the first of August, so. This lead is kindly agreed to, so with that, if, if anything else emerges, I'll, uh, you know, we'll. Keep you all informed, but this was probably the easiest. Zoning board meeting I've personally ever attended since I.
Woody, um, wanna catch Charlie up on the situation with the minutes?
Oh, yeah, Charlie, um, uh, one of the agenda items was approval of the meeting minutes from June, but I've, um. Offered to do some edits. To kind of help, and, and I'll talk to Montana about tense, uh, past tense versus present and a few other. Um, things like cutting out some extraneous. Non, uh, material. Um. Happening, so I mean, they, they, they happened, she accurately reflected them, but I don't think we need to report. In quite such detail, so maybe that's something I'll just do with Montana, and it's just a question of. You know, getting on the same page, and I, I appreciate the work you do because.
Yeah, I was, I was gonna comment on, on the minutes, I'll, I'll give you a call next week. This week.
All right, that, that's, that's good, because I mean, we, we, we forget at times that Cassandra had eight years or more of. You know, training and editing and, uh, free advice, and, and before her, Jen Orem had, uh, twelve to fifteen, so we've. Had a lot of time to. Explain or at least, uh, demonstrate what we're looking for, and it's not gonna be done in, in.
Now we have the opportunity to mold Montana.
Yes, I have nine months under my belt, so there's that.
Okay. All right, so Charlie, with that, uh, get your comments in, there's no urgency, we'll vote on them next month. But it'll be helpful if, if we can understand where you're coming from. And anybody else? Okay?
All right.
We'll have a very nice July, it's starting out pretty well, so I'd make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Chitika, oh, seconded, okay, bye, Dave, uh, Woody Chitikai?
Dave McMorrissey.
Oh, John Helen, are you, do you want to speak? Nope, he doesn't want to speak, okay. Uh.
Lee Darcey.
I'll, I'll vote I, please.
Okay, and Matt. Okay, thank, and thanks again, Montana, for all your work. Okay, so we are officially adjourned.
Thanks.
I have a minute.
Until July, bye-bye.
Okay.